Keeping items for everyone. We are going to be recording the event as I hit record. And we will be sharing this in a future edition of CC Daily for those who are unable to attend or for those who would like to relive the moment and see it again. Everybody who is attending is muted right now because we have more than 350 people participating in our town hall this morning. We booked 90 minutes, but we are very hopeful and should be done well before then. But we do have a lot of important information that we want to get through today and also make sure that we answer the questions that we did receive in advance of the town hall. Let me just make sure here. If a particular question is not answered either through one of the presentations you hear this morning or as part of the facilitated Q and A, I will work with the individual who has best answered that question and then provide a answer for you hopefully this afternoon, if not by Monday. And with that, it is 11:03. And so why don't we get started? And it's my pleasure to introduce President Meghan Hughes.
Thank you so much, Amy. Welcome to everyone. I wanted to take just a very brief moment before offering some remarks to thank Amy and the entire marketing and communications team. Just like the rest of us have had to learn a new set of skills to work in this fashion, Amy and her team had to learn how to design and execute these virtual town halls. I know they've been valuable for us. For me, I hope they've been valuable for the community. And Amy, I just want to say thank you and to your entire team for doing such a beautiful job. So for all of you who are joining us today, thank you so much for making time on your Friday to do so. Today, we are going to listen to updates on crucial topics from our heads of administration, academic affairs, student services, and finance and strategy. We will begin after my remarks with Associate Vice President Ogden talking to us about our planning for return to campus. We'll then move to an academic affairs report focusing on recent faculty achievements, moving on to looking at course success and failure rates through an equity lens. And then finally, an overview of what the team, what our faculty and the academic affairs team has achieved in year one of our Title III guided pathways work. We'll move on to a discussion of student services specifically focused on enrollment and our COVID recovery scholarships, and then conclude with an update on our financial picture and an introduction to our next strategic plan design process. So that is the content of what we're looking to bring forward to the community today. And I wanted to begin with with just a moment of collective reflection. It is a week from today that the college officially moved to this new existence. So next Friday marks a year that all of us packed our bags and moved to a new way of being a community college. What am I struck by? I am struck that there are many people that are a part of our community, many people who I anticipate are joining this town hall today who have lost someone they love. I know that we have community members, faculty, staff, administrators, who have lost a family member or a beloved friend. And to all of you, I know this is a difficult time. And I want you to know that all of us that are part of this community send our sympathy to you and to your families. When I go back to a year ago, if you're listening to this town hall and you were someone who a year ago said, well, this is what our new normal will be for 12 months. I think you are an outlier. So I can remember as I will genuinely say that when I went home that Friday night, my plan was to come back on Monday. And as we began to course correct and adjust, I certainly did not anticipate that one year later we would be truly beginning our recovery and coming out of this pandemic. And yet, here we are. So when I reflect on what everyone on this video call has done to make it through this year, I don't expect that I will see the likes of it again. And I want you all to know that I have heard from so many of you. And I have a detailed appreciation and understanding for what it's taken for you all to keep coming to this college and doing the work each of you does every day to take care of our students. I know for all of you, all of us are part of a family. And whatever that family looks like, COVID has brought an entirely new set of worries and pressures and responsibilities. And I am in your debt for all that you've done to continue being an effective partner in this work that we do at CCRI. And I am very, very eager to be back on campus with all of us returning as the community that I know that I know that we are. So when I think about where we are today, I see what many of you see. I see that our country is making progress on vaccine production and distribution. I see that the state of Rhode Island is making progress on vaccinating distribution. And I feel hopeful. I know that Alix Ogden will walk us through a sense of what that means for CCRI. I think what I would want everyone here to know from me is that our top priority is going to be bringing back our people, and that's all of you safely to campus and doing it in a way that is thoughtful and focused on the ongoing safety of our community. When I think about what that safe return looks like, I will offer what has been true since really the beginning of this pandemic, which is of course, the pandemic itself will determine what is possible for us. And so that any offering I make today in terms of what I anticipate may be true. I would want to underscore that is dependent on the pandemic. And it is entirely dependent on our numbers continuing to look good in Rhode Island. So this is a projection, to be sure. And I do want to emphasize that it is a projection. And here's what I see. I am hopeful that this summer with our summer, both of our summer sessions, that we will be in a position to offer up to 30% of our courses in person. That is simply thrilling to me, given that, you know, north of 90% of our courses have been run remote. The idea that we will be returning students to campus in a meaningful way is exciting for me to think about. And I think a genuine opportunity for us to sort of polish our practice of doing it well. When I look forward to fall, and again, underscoring dependent on the progress of our management of this pandemic and our recovery, I hope we will see that number increase. I would want everyone to know it is not a realistic aspiration that we will be 100% back with in-person learning this fall. What I can say at this juncture is we hope that it will be more than what we are able to do this summer. And please look for us to continue to look at that design and rollout and continue to come back to you, including throughout the summer as we're learning more about what is possible for fall. So when I look to the year ahead, here's what I see. And this is truer of community colleges than any other form of higher education across the country. So what is going to be true for CCRI will be true for our two-year colleagues across the United States. And I think it is something that those of us who have been working with our community college populations for years, we already know. So it is our populations who are disproportionately negatively impacted, negatively impacted by recessions and by health crises like this. What that means is we have disproportionately suffered. Our communities have suffered, and our enrollment has additionally suffered. So I think this is a recovery that will take us more than a year to come out of. As you all will recollect, it was September of 2019 that for the first time since the Great Recession, we saw our enrollment actually tick up. I don't expect to see that this fall. And I think we need to anticipate, what would I say, persistent enrollment pressure. I will talk briefly about, I think, a single solution to that. It will not solve everything, but I think it is a helpful input into how we think about recovering from the pandemic and the hit that it has done to our enrollment. As I look forward, I think we need to ready ourselves for an academic year that will continue to bring with it an enrollment decline. Additionally, we are in an interesting and unusual position with respect to our state appropriation and what we can reasonably anticipate. The good news is that I think we can all be hopeful as Americans that Washington will send a third relief bill. The size of that, I think, remains to be seen. We'll see what the Senate does with the bill passed by the House. But I think as Rhode Islanders, we can be hopeful that there will be federal dollars coming to Rhode Island and that CCRI will receive those federal dollars. What we also need to be mindful of is that our state legislature will be looking at that funding as supplemental funding and will almost certainly take that funding into account when they think about funding us with state appropriation dollars. So there is good news, and then there is more complicated news. And what I mean by that is simply the relief money coming out of Washington is desperately needed and will be put to work thoughtfully. As we all know, it's one-time funding. So the funding sources that provide year-over-year stability to this college are two basic streams. It is our enrollment stream, and it is our state appropriation dollars. So while we are anticipating a positive funding stream from the federal government, that is not a sustainable funding stream. And we need to remain strongly focused on advocating and persuading the state legislature to continue to provide strong state appropriation dollars. Now to the opportunities. When Vice President Enright delivers her report, she will go into more detail here. I want to say, when I look at things to be excited about, to feel optimistic about, both in terms of creating meaningful college access for Rhode Islanders and helping our college recover financially, I am delighted that we have received just north of $5 million in federal money for COVID recovery scholarships. So I'll leave that to Vice President Enright to talk to you about in greater detail. But that is an opportunity, and we need to grab hold of that opportunity and make sure we do everything within our reach to aggressively go after recruiting, enrolling, and then serving those students come this summer and fall. The single most important item on our legislative agenda, I think, I would hope everyone at this college knows, and that is ensuring that the joint bill authored by the Senate President and the Speaker of the House to remove the sunset clause in our promise program, that it's passed. That is our number one issue. It is vitally important, again, for the things we both need to think about every day. We all need to think about every day. Number one, we're here to create educational opportunity for Rhode Islanders. And no. So my request of everyone here is that you engage your legislator and speak passionately about the importance of Promise to Rhode Island and to CCRI. Finally, Tuesday night, as I would assume we all know, the $107 million Higher Education Bond passed. $12 million of that will be coming to the college. As we reported, the significant dollars are going to be spent completely transforming our student services spaces in Warwick and Lincoln, and then ongoing classroom and lab work at Providence, Lincoln, and Warwick. So I'm excited to get that work underway. I want to thank Associate Vice President Ogden and Amy Kemp and Bobby Gondola for all the work you did with others to get that bond passed. So thank you for that. In closing, as many of you know, we welcomed to Rhode Island a new post-secondary commissioner, Commissioner Shannon Gilkey, who comes to us from Kentucky. He has worked in Rhode Island before as part of the statewide attainment goal. I am enthusiastic and excited about his arrival. As we are working together with our colleagues at RIC, we are encouraging the commissioner and his office to focus in two areas that we know will have an immediate benefit to our students. And that is a predictable tuition model. That's something that we talked about four years ago with the commissioner, made some headway, and then never got to the finish line. So a predictable tuition model makes life much easier for our students and their families because they know how to plan financially. It also enables our Student Services Office, our enrollment, our financial aid, to have a look forward, along with our CFO and her team, to actually begin to anticipate what our financial picture looks like and how we set up the institution to serve those students well. So I'm hopeful that will gain some energy. And then finally, I remember from my very first days here, meeting with faculty and talking about faculty's frustration with how hard it is for our students to transfer to our four-year partners. It is an as-yet unrealized priority. I cared greatly about that. We are not a destination. We must be a bridge into the four-year schools and into the workforce. So I am hopeful that we will have the energy of our commissioner to see those really truly seamless transfer pathways designed, most particularly with our colleagues at Rhode Island College and the university. So that is sort of my report, what I wanted to bring forward to all of you today. I want to close by thanking you all. I'll have a little bit of time at the end to thank you again. I am deeply grateful for what you've done every single day over the last year. I look forward to being able to welcome and see many of you as we begin our return to campus. And I will now turn it over to Alix Ogden to give her COVID operations update. Alix?
Good morning, everyone. So we're starting off with a discussion about returning to campus because we thought it would frame what you're going to hear from my colleagues later on in the town hall. So, and Amy, you can actually go to the next slide. Great, thank you. So really, one of the questions is what to expect. You know, we are operating under what the current guidance and regulations are from the CDC and the Department of Health. So what you'll see, and if you've been to campus, you've gone through a screening protocol. You, when you enter the building, you do a temp check. And then you either use our online feature to pre-answer the questions about how you're feeling that day and any travel that you may have done or exposure. And then you sign in and you continue on to your work area. We will be continuing that for everyone that comes to the college. We will have, you know, we have cleaning protocols in place that are consistent with the CDC guidelines. That's what facilities is doing in the buildings. When you go back, when you, when we all go back, we're going to be asked to take care of our own office spaces and things like that so that facilities can really focus on the places where more people are gathering, such as classrooms. So on the changeover between each class, they can disinfect the room. We are, there's an executive order about in-person learning in higher ed institutions. It's 2104. And it does require us to build a surveillance testing program and a contact tracing program. So to date, in our HOR section, they have taken care of their contact tracing. We've been fortunate in the other parts of the college because of our remote teaching and learning to not have had a huge number of self-reported positive cases. And where we have, and there's been a contact on campus, we have done that contact tracing. We're going to have to build that out more, obviously, with the number of people that we're anticipating coming to campus. So the testing may mean that we're testing up to 50% of our college community every week. What the Department of Health is currently thinking is that we would use the BINAX testing. So that kind of testing is where the person coming into the college would get handed a box and a testing kit. They would do their own test and put their own swab back into the box and then provide the box back. So there's, it's a pretty efficient, it's a very efficient way of doing a large number of testing. And the test results come back in 15 minutes. So if you're a student, you would probably, what we're thinking is, for example, in Warwick, you would go down into the grade hall until you received a text alerting you to your test results. So there'll be more on that later as we're building out this program. So please look for more information about it in the future. We also will be working with reduced adjusted capacity for our classrooms and our other common spaces. If you've been to the grade hall, you've seen how all of the chairs are there spaced out in socially, in a safe socially-distanced manner. That'll be the same in our classrooms. And again, we're still operating with a six-foot social distancing. We have the Goody Clancy analysis. That's really a starting point because as we plan for what classes are going to be in which rooms, we are going to have to look and do an analysis of the room to make sure that if it's the number of students that we think we're going to have with room for circulation and space for the professor. So the Goody Clancy really is a starting point. But I think this is, all of this is my way of saying what President Hughes said in our opening. We're going to have to be flexible. We're planning for what we know now. We're planning for what Department of Health is telling us. And we may have to pivot. And I know that this community can do that because we did it a year ago. So I guess I wanted to just close out this part with a word about vaccines. A lot of people have asked if we can be a vaccine center, distribution center, and also about prioritization. So let me just, I'll back up about a month and a half ago. The state did ask us for setting priorities among our faculty and staff for vaccination. And we were very clear with them that we wanted people who were going to be doing in-person teaching to be the priorities. They have since changed their strategy. So they're not, with one exception, they went to a strategy that really looked at, it looked at geography, it looked at, I'm sorry, now I'm. So it looked at three things, but it wasn't based on occupation. And the one twist that happened actually just this week is President Biden asked for governors to prioritize teachers. And it appears that Governor McKee is going in that direction. My understanding from talking with the Department of Health is that does not currently include higher ed faculty. But as I were saying, you know, we'll see how this changes and evolves. I think it's so encouraging about the third vaccine. And we'll just continue to communicate about what our plans are, how they change, and what you can expect when you get back to campus. Thank you, Amy.
Oh, I'm going to hand it over to Vice President Kostigan.
Thank you. Thank you, Alix. Welcome, everyone. I hope you can hear me because I just had a pop-up. So could somebody nod that, yeah, okay, very good. And I'm not going to close it out because I don't want to disappear. It's wonderful to be here with the entire college. Last Friday, Academic Affairs, we had one of our faculty meetings. So some of this information for those that attended will be familiar. But I do want to take this moment, as President Hughes did at the outset and we did last week, recognize this incredible milestone that none of us could have ever imagined. And my remarks today are really going to focus on how we responded to that as a faculty and looking at the impact on our students and their, the equity gaps that we are going to need to address. And then finally, finish up with an update on our Title III grant, which has just completed its first year. So Amy, if you could advance the slide, I'll start. I'll start with our faculty intervention. So as President Hughes indicated, a year ago, next week on a Friday, we all left the office. It was the last day of spring break and had every intention of returning on Monday. Events turned very quickly that I think by midnight that night, we knew that we were not coming back. We also knew earlier in the week that it was probably unlikely that we would be turning, returning back to school on the Monday, I think it was the 16th. During that week, our CIT team, who I send tremendous thanks to, our instructional design team came together and really created a transitional plan for our faculty to have available to them training opportunities. So over the course of this past year, we have offered more than 90 training opportunities. These have included both internal and external trainings. Internally, we've had webinars, we've had live classes, we have had external support from our Blackboard. We've run our online training program and have had wonderful participation. All in all, 90-plus attendees at the last count participated in these, in these programs. And we also have provided more than 200-plus consultations. And these consultations include both individual and at the department level. So there has been just a really great response. And as I've said in many, in many audiences, too many audiences, you know, what's totally remarkable about what teachers have had to do K through 20 is not only teach, but also become a student. For many of us, as you know, entering into the COVID pandemic, we only had about 13% of our courses being delivered online. So a very small footprint that had to expand to 100%. So there was a tremendous learning curve that needed to take place, not to mention that we were also dealing with the personal impact of such a life-threatening virus. In addition to that, we only had about 40% of our faculty utilizing our learning management system. So when I look at this slide, that is where a lot of our focus went, getting people, faculty upskilled in terms of online teaching and comfortable with our learning management system. So it was a wonderful, a wonderful effort put forth by many, including faculty who helped out with many of these trainings. Amy, we can go to the next slide. This slide really brings a smile to my face. 94% of our full-time faculty who taught in the fall had participated in some form of training, whether it be the Blackboard Academy or participated in the EPTO. We also had a winter workshop that saw 27 faculty members. 11 of those 27 have already been credentialed. There are a few that are still working on their assignments to get that credential. So we are continuously providing opportunities to improve our delivery. And I loved what President Hughes said when she said, "continue to polish our offerings in terms of professional development." So that commitment you have from me, and we will look together to identify where and how we can better, better do that. One of the things, you know, when we look at data is to say, okay, 94% of our faculty attended some sort of training. But what was the return on that investment? How did the participants feel? So through the efforts of our AHAC group, which is a group of faculty and academic deans and staff members of more than 45, which 80% are faculty, they had devised two surveys that went out to faculty and students in October and December. And what I can tell you is that in October, 92% of the faculty surveyed felt very confident or confident in their ability to teach online. We resurveyed in December. It went down a little bit to 89%. I don't think that's surprising. As you get into the semester, you may be tired. We may not have surveyed the same people. But all in all, really very, very strong numbers. So I want to thank, I want to thank everyone. surveyed the same people, uh, but all in all, really very, very strong numbers. So, um, I want to thank, I want to thank everyone who, uh, participated and certainly we were able to see, um, a nice return on the investment. Next, I'd like to go to some analytics. Um, as you know, our learning management system is the Blackboard, um, uh, system. And we have the ability, which we were able to purchase last summer, uh, a tool that allows us to, to measure the activity of, um, uh, the components of our Blackboard system. So this is a faculty tool usage. This does not go down to faculty names or, um, or, um, any sort of identifiers. It just looks at the overall activity in the, in the tool. And again, remembering that prior to COVID, we only had about a 40%, um, uh, uh, usage rate. I can tell you that 96% of our courses that are in Blackboard had communications. These data points are between January 15th and the 28th. So little more than, um, uh, almost two weeks into the semester. 96% had, uh, communicated. We had 85% that had uploaded, uh, content. That means, uh, the, the course outline, um, and syllabus. This was, um, very strong and it was a little stronger in the fall because many of you participated in the Blackboard, uh, template building where we built 37 templates, 25, uh, course templates, 25 of which were directed to high enrolled courses. We also had, I believe it sits around 72% of, uh, course management, which meant week to week, there was new material being, um, put forward. And within the first two weeks, we saw 68% of assessments, which is wonderful because we've talked about early and often assessments for our students. Our Ally, uh, tool is an ADA tool that is, um, helps faculty with compliance. Uh, this is measuring around 13%. So you're going to see these last three, uh, really areas for improvement, where we can do some campaigns around that. Um, the publisher platforms that many of you are using, uh, that is, um, uh, that, that is about 6%. And, uh, we really would love to see that at 100%. So we'll be looking to work with faculty, uh, the publishers and our CIT group to improve that. And finally, Rubrik's is really just measuring at about 2%. So we've got some work to do around that. But the nice thing about these analytics is that they drive, um, they, they drive the, um, the, the professional development opportunities for us. I just want to go back to one, uh, part here where it's a collaboration. So, um, we saw, I think around 75% with collaboration. That would be tools that we use for, uh, communication with students. So in our synchronous classes, we use collaborate. Um, in our asynchronous, we use medial. And then of course discussion boards, et cetera. We did see a slight decline, uh, from fall to spring, um, with the, um, introduction of Zoom. So we know that many of you are using Zoom and that is really, that's a great thing. And we don't have a way to measure that yet. Uh, but we will, we will figure out how to survey and, and reconcile that. Amy, um, I can go on to, now I'm going to go into the grade, the course, um, pass rate comparison from the fall of 2019 to the fall of 2020. Um, uh, the fall of 2019 is in green. The fall of 2020 is in gold. We did include D as a passing rate. And we've looked at it both ways with the D out and, uh, the D in, and it's a negligible, difference. Um, and so you can see these numbers here. We've had a, about a 6, 6% drop in, in pass rates overall. So I'm going to move along, um, and go to the next slide. These, um, the, this is a slide talking about equity gaps, which we're going to need to really, um, focus on. So when we look at, um, students of color, uh, in the fall of 2019, they were at 71% pass rate, compared to students who identified as white, which were 79%. That rate for students of color went down to 63% in the fall, um, and, uh, for students who identified as white as 74%. So there is a, um, a huge, uh, difference in the pass rates that we're going to need to address. And I just start to introduce this topic, uh, for you, um, so that we can, uh, start to plan how we will address these, these gaps. And I'm going to move to the next slide at this point. The Title III, I would just like to, um, this is our pathway to progress, uh, $1.7 million grant. Some of the things that we have been able to do is we've appointed our, um, we've appointed our Director of Guided Pathways. We've brought in a workforce, um, a workplace learning coordinator. Uh, we've appointed four of our pathway navigators. Um, we have 14 measures, 10 of which were measurable in the first year. We met seven and exceeded, uh, seven out of those 10. And the areas that we did not, um, meet, we have, um, those were due to COVID. And that, that has been, um, uh, reconciled with, with the, with the grant. So, um, looking forward, we've now got some subgroups working and, um, uh, it's very exciting work. So I want to thank everybody that is, um, participating in this, in this, uh, project. Um, at this point, I'm going to, um, uh, pass, uh, the microphone over to my colleague, uh, Vice President Enright. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosemary, and good morning, everyone. I guess I'll start, uh, before I get into statistics and enrollment updates just by saying hello. It's, it's hard to believe that we are a year into this. I find myself more and more missing all of you, missing our students and, um, more anxious than ever to just be back on campus. I think, I was trying to characterize how I was feeling. Who is, I think I was talking to Bob earlier this week. And it's this sense that we're equal parts tired and inspired all in one. And I think that's what this moment feels like. We've never run this hard, this much, every day, every night, all weekend for, for this kind of stretch and not even being able to get together to, you know, enjoy a pizza. So that is exhausting and I'm sure we're all feeling that. And the flip side of that is to think about where we've come, what we've accomplished, what we've been able to navigate through as an institution is pretty remarkable and pretty inspiring. And when you hear what our students have been able to do despite every challenge thrown at them, it's just great to think that we are making our way through this and that in and of itself together feels inspiring. So, so not that anyone asked, but that's my headline for today. I feel tired and inspired. And now I guess I'll tell you about enrollment. So Amy, if we can go to the first slide. So this is simply a recap of fall enrollment, which I'll go quickly because I know that we've talked about this before. But thank you to Phil Gordon and the folks in Institutional Effectiveness and Greg, who were kind enough to put this together in a way that I think really illuminates what, what we actually saw in our fall enrollment. And that is the 7% drop, which you see on the left-hand side of the screen. We have talked about quite a bit. It is, uh, not good to see a 7% drop. And yet it is good when we think about the context. We, we did beat a whole lot of community colleges and I think we worked for it. Um, and that's good to see. What's really sobering in this data, uh, particularly on the heels of what Rosemary just shared, um, around equity gaps among the students who are currently here, is that there were equity gaps before those students even got here for this academic year. So while we have an overall 7% drop, we saw a 12% drop with our low-income students. We saw a 9% drop with our students of color. So we will have some really focused work to do to, to rebuild our student community and to focus on our access mission, which is opening the doors of our college as broad and widely as we possibly can for as many Rhode Islanders as possible to get an education, particularly those who have lacked, who have lacked access. And those are low-income students and students of color. And we are going to work to bring those students back to our institution. So Amy, if we go to the next slide, we'll see that we see the same dynamics in spring enrollment just, uh, worsening. And I think for all of those, um, faculty members who are in the classroom, advisors who are talking to students, you see this in your everyday existence, that students are working hard to put all these pieces together amid challenges. And it is, um, unfortunate, though not shocking, that we have many students who chose not to come back for spring. And that's why we see a 12% overall dip. Uh, and we see the same dynamic with respect to equity with the 16% drop in low-income students, uh, and 14% drop in students of color. So I think the question with that is our reality and our context becomes, so what do we do about it? And if we flip to the next slide, I mean, I think I could talk for an hour about the many things that we are going to do about this as an institution. I think the one that feels most immediate and important for the whole institution to understand is the COVID Recovery Scholarship Program that we've launched because it is significant and it is our hope that it will support thousands of students in returning to or continuing with their education at our college. So the first, uh, the first two of these three, the High School Graduate Scholarship and the Finnish Scholarship, those are both funded by, uh, a stream of CARES funding called GEAR, which I believe stands for Governors Emergency Education Relief Fund. And this is a fund that's to support governors' educational priorities. And we are fortunate to be the recipient of these funds to support these first two. The High School Graduate Scholarship recognizes the fact that many 2020 high school graduates didn't make it to college this year. The, the biggest population that was lost in our country, particularly within community college enrollment, is the, the population of first-time college students. So this will be a promise-like program. It will essentially follow all the rules of Rhode Island Promise. It will just be for students who didn't make it to college this year. They're essentially starting Promise one year late. So if you know any of those students, uh, send them our way. Second one is the Finnish Scholarship. This really serves two populations. First off, students whose in, whose education at our college was interrupted by the pandemic. So we know that there are many students who didn't come back this year, but we're pretty far along toward their degrees. We also know that there are 130,000 Rhode Islanders with some college and no degree. And when we think about the labor market impacts of this pandemic, that is precisely the population that has been most hurt either by job loss or adverse job impacts where they have fewer hours or lower earnings. So we want to provide a path to get those folks, uh, on a path to college degrees and certificates. And what this scholarship does is it takes anyone who is 50% of the way toward a degree or 50% of the way toward a certificate. And it says, come back and we will get you across the finish line. We will provide a last dollar scholarship to help you complete. So this is probably one where we will be working very closely with advisors, faculty, chairs, et cetera, because many of these students will be known to our institution and it will be about how do we invite them back in the right way that really encourages them to come back and to, to keep going. The last summer scholarship is one that we are funding through our institutional, uh, federal relief funds to provide in a last dollar fashion, two free summer classes for all of the students who've been at our college during the pandemic. So if you think back to spring, we have last spring, last summer, last fall, this spring, all of those students have been gutting it out, pushing along, making their way through. But we know, uh, as we just saw in the data, there have been more course failures. There have been more course withdrawals. There have been students who've taken fewer classes because they're trying to figure out how to put it together online. So the idea of this is if you stopped out somewhere along the way in the pandemic, or you simply didn't quite get as far along as you would have liked, uh, we're going to support your return or support your continued momentum this summer through this scholarship. So that I think is all I had. Enrollment is down. We are going to work hard to get enrollment up because that's what we do. And I will pass it along to the next person, and that is Vice President Albritton.
Hang on there for a second, Kristen. It seems that you may be muted or we cannot hear you. How about now? I mean, you guys missed my best jokes. Um, as I was saying, thank you. And I'm so glad you are all here and good morning. President Hughes, uh, talked about Amy and her wonderful team, but right this second, I'm questioning their motives by putting me between you and lunch when it's a beautiful day in sunny Rhode Island. Um, so, um, we have a couple of things that, um, I want to go through today. Uh, I would like to give you an update on where we are with our 21 budget and talk a little bit about some of the funding streams that you've heard from our colleagues. And, um, they've laid out some of the plans. And now we have to talk about how we're going to pay for those. And then I'd like to, uh, finish back going over our strategic plan and what that process is going to look like. Um, so I'm ready, Amy? Thank you. So the last time we got together, um, we were facing, uh, and anticipating a multimillion-dollar budgetary shortfall and still steeped in the middle of making very hard choices of how we were going to find the other side of that. We were facing enrollment declines. We still had no state budget. Um, and every indication from our state and the, uh, financial folks that I worked with at the state was that we should be preparing for, actually the direction was to prepare for a 15% budget reduction, which for us is about $8 million. So that along with our, um, enrollment declines, which directly affect our tuition and fee revenue, we responded and, um, we managed our budget to the level we were instructed to. So I am, um, I am hopeful today as I come before you to tell you, we are in a much stronger place as President Hughes, Hughes told you in her letter yesterday, a stronger place, uh, but still, um, one that is, um, not as precarious as it was, but still not sure. Uh, we have many, many variables that we'll talk about in a few minutes, um, that are still out of our control. And gosh, I hate the, the southern cliched tell a mama joke, but, um, my mama always tells me that you have to plan for those things that you can't control. Um, we know what we, what we can control and that's how we, um, put together a framework for how we're going to deal with those that we can't. Um, so what happened in December 2020, uh, as most of you know, we've received our general revenue appropriation from the state, uh, 52.26 million, which was, uh, nearly flat with what the governor had recommended. So as we discussed earlier, that was, um, 8 million better than what we had been told to prepare for. Uh, so again, it put us in a much stronger place for FY21, a stronger place that didn't come until halfway through the fiscal year. So I think that's, that's important for everyone to, to remember. Uh, normally we would have all indications of our budget, um, in June with a final approval in May and June and a final approval, uh, to roll out in July. So I think it's just important that we all sort of come back to the fact that, um, our budget, because of the pandemic and many other, uh, reasons that I'm, you know, I don't pretend to be politically savvy enough to understand, uh, we didn't get a budget until December. So I think it's, it's all important. It's important for all of us to know that we were operating under what we knew and we did, um, the best with the information that we had. So along with that, in January 2021, uh, Congress passed a new relief package, a very large relief, relief package with $20 billion for higher education. And we'll talk a little bit about, um, that CHAIRS II is what we're lovingly calling it, uh, in a moment and what that means for CCRI and how I, uh, think that will affect us moving forward. So, uh, CHAIRS I, you guys will remember, we got, uh, last spring, um, $5.4 million for institutional expenses. And those had to be directly related to our response to the pandemic. Uh, $5 million that had to go directly to students in emergency aid. Sarah, her financial aid team did a fantastic job, um, of getting those funds into the pockets of our students, um, as they were intended. Uh, the other $5.4 million has been used, um, to keep us on campus, um, to get us off, to keep us on campus in the way that we've been able to and to get us off campus so that we could continue to provide for our students, um, instruction and student services and all the great things that we all do. So the $5.4 million was specifically for our response to COVID. And you guys have heard me say this a couple of times, but I do think it's important that we sort of come back to, um, all of the variables that have gone into where we are today with our finances. So, uh, CHAIRS II. Now, um, if you're anything like me, you see these numbers and add them up and it's, it's a large award. What I want you to remember is that we are a four-campus school with many Pell students. And that is what that number is based on. So our allocation So our allocation is based on how much it will take, how much money it will take us, again, to the, to respond to the remainder of the pandemic. So HERF II, the CRRAAA, was the package that came out beginning of January. CCRI's allocation was $22 million. Again, $5 million of that must go directly to students. $17 million is for institutional expenses. So here's what I want you to know. It's not, again, I've told you this before, it's not a magic pot of money that's going to solve all our problems. You heard President Hughes say that it is one-time funds. It's exactly that. But the other part that's important to remember is, again, we are going to be going from an all-online environment back onto four campuses in a brick-and-mortar environment, because that's who we are. So that is what we will be doing. That $17 million is going to be meant to help us teach in smaller class sizes, help us have PPEs, help us be able to do contact tracing. And it will go quickly. Every dollar will be spent very well. But I want you guys to know that it, although it appears to be a windfall, and I, I get it, I'm thrilled to have it, we could not continue and get ourselves back on the campus where our students need us to be without this kind of money. It will take every dollar of that. And I see, I see President, Vice President Enright is on the top of my screen. I know she, she will agree with me that we have our work cut out for us and every dollar of this money will be spent in trying to get us in a thoughtful way back to campus. So what's next? So we're gonna, again, you guys have seen, you've heard these things from me before. And the, the great fun part about finance, what I love so much is that it, it never really changes, but it's always never the same either. So we're going to continue to scenario plan. And again, it is about us, you've heard from my colleagues, it's about us being flexible and nimble and being able to respond to something that we have no control over. We have no control over COVID, obviously. So what we are going to do is control the things we can in order to increase our ability to respond. And while we do that, we have to continue to support our students. And that's what you guys know that. You heard Vice President Enright and President Hughes say it, along with Vice President Kost, and that's what we're here for. We're going to try to minimize disruption to faculty and staff and protect the health and safety of CCRI communities. So those are our priorities. As you heard President Hughes say yesterday and again today, the bulk of that, the vast majority of the $8 million that we received in our enacted budget in December, halfway through the year, is going to go into our people. It's going to go into bringing those folks back. It's going to go in reinvesting our people. It's going to go into hiring those positions that are critical to the, to the operations of our college, for our students, for our faculty and staff that we've had to put off for so very long. And I think we are all cognizant of how hard everyone has had to work because we haven't done those things. But because we were funded in the way that we were in, in '21, we are able to, to invest those funds now. We're going to wait and watch and plan again. I think you remember, and we've talked about it before, with about three weeks of the fiscal year left last year, we found out that $5 million of our state budget was being scooped. So, gosh, that sounded country, scooped. So pulled out of our amended budget for, for FY20. So I want us to be able to respond to that should something similar happen in FY21. And we have every reason to believe that it will. You've heard President Hughes talk about that. As your CFO, I have every reason to believe that we need to be prepared for that to happen again. And, and with a new governor, we are waiting to see what our FY22 recommended budget looks like. So we, we know what we put forward. We know it's been approved by the OPC. We need to hear from the state what that's going to look like, because we will have to, again. What we need to provide for does not change. Only our funding streams change. So the need doesn't. We're going to wait clear direction from the Federal Department of Education on CARES II. So my recommendation has been that we prepare as we should and we wait and hear what, what kind of direction we get on exactly what those can be spent for. But as you heard me say, we had been planning for our return to campus on four campuses in a reduced fashion, smaller classes. Still, it, it's going to cost us more to provide the same service we always had. So that's what that CARES II money is for. You can continue to expect regular updates from us on budget developments and our financial position. We will try and keep you as updated as we possibly can. I know you guys can get tired of hearing it, but it, it's important stuff. And I want to make sure that we're all communicating to each other and having open dialogue, as I know President Hughes does, about our financial position. So with that, I will turn it back over to, oh, sorry, I will turn it over to me for strategic plan. Sorry, this is the best part of the whole presentation. Sorry, guys. So we are coming into the middle of, to the beginning of our strategic planning cycle. As you all know that we had a strategic plan for '18 to '21, now we're moving into the cycle to get us ready for the strategic plan for '22 to '25. So what's our purpose? We, what we're trying to do is do a refresh of our plan. We know that the goals that we set for ourselves in '18 through '21, that's our mission, those are our goals. And we can all say we've done a fantastic job, but we're not quite there. So I think that the idea of a strategic plan, again, I lovingly call it a refresh, is that we want to highlight our accomplishments. We want to talk about all the great things that we've done. We want to reflect on what our opportunities are and where could we have done better. And we want to put together a document that at its, at its core is much the same as it is now, only better. So I think that what I would want you to know is that over the next few months, and we'll talk about this in just a second, we're going to have lots of opportunities to hear from you all, to talk to you about what we're hearing, to get your feedback on what you think on the current state of the plan and where you see us going. So lots of communication to come. Excuse me. Sorry, Amy, can you go back one slide for me? So what does participation look like? We're going to have community engagement, focusing, focus groups with faculty, staff, and student committees. I've got the honor of working with Liz Giordano, who comes to us from Workforce Partnerships, partner with, with me on this project. You'll be hearing from us. We would like to have, we're planning college-wide virtual events, much like this one, to share and collect feedback. You can expect ongoing communication. We have an updated, interactive website where we want to be able to both communicate out and get responses back and feedback from you all. So we'd like it to be a dynamic space. And you can also always count on CC Daily for outreach and updates. So our timeline. After spring break, you can expect to start those, you can expect those conversations to begin, and those will last through graduation. And that will be our information gathering portion of the process. Over the summer, Liz and I will work together with you all and the leadership team on organizing all that feedback, making adjustments and suggestions to the planning documents. In the fall, we'll share those back out with the community for a final review. And then before the break, at the end of the year, we will submit that document to the OPC for approval. And January 22, we will launch our new refreshed strategic plan. So thank you all. That's what I have for today. I'm so glad you're all here. Amy, I will turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you, Vice President Albrecht. We are running a bit behind. That's okay, though, because we do have some important questions that we do want to get to. And again, if we don't get to a question today and now, we will make sure that we follow up individually with those who ask that question. So Alix, why don't I get started with you? Here's a question. With the bond passing, what is the timeline to start renovations to student services and with it, moving athletics to Flanagan campus?
So I'm thrilled that the bond passed. And I, we also have our, our colleagues at RIC and URI to thank as well. The bond money is generally available quite quickly. We are going to be coming to, to Sarah and to athletics with a timeframe for the move. So the moves are moving athletics to Lincoln and then moving student services into the Fieldhouse and then starting the work. So there's kind of a runway getting up to actually breaking ground in the current student services area. But we will be developing that timeline and, and moving on it shortly. Once, and we'll review it with athletics and Sarah and her team before, before we hit go.
Great, thank you. I will follow up with another question to you. Will a college require employees and students to be vaccinated before they're able to return to campus?
So right now, the CDC and RIDO are not requiring that people are vaccinated before they return to work. We'll be, again, this is one of those things that we'll be monitoring really carefully and of course, encouraging people to go get vaccinated. It's the most important thing that we can all do as a community, because if this has shown us anything, it's that we all have a role taking care of one another.
Absolutely, thank you. Vice President Kost, again, I have a couple of questions for you, if that's okay. So as President Hughes mentioned, we'll be returning to campus this summer with about 30% of online or in-person classes. As the college, the number of in-person classes, is there a priority on what type of those courses will be?
Yes, thank you, Amy. We will continue with our health science courses, who have already been on campus, our laboratory science courses. And we will be focusing on high-enrolled courses and particularly English and math and developmental education. So that process is underway currently.
And speaking to that, some faculty have concerns about returning to the classroom because of medical issues that may prohibit them, prevent them from getting the vaccine. How is the college thinking about accommodating those concerns and those situations?
Right, thank you. We're partnering very, very closely. I'm partnering with our AVP Ogden, the physical plant, Rhode Island Department of Health. We will ensure that all protocols are in place as we return. We anticipate a gradual return. Summer will teach us a lot with a more robust physical presence in the fall. But I want to also stress, as President Hughes did at the outset, that the fall is not going to look like fall of 2019. So we, we will, you know, be following the guidelines of CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health and of course, our own internal guidelines related to any accommodations.
Great, thank you so much. Sarah, we have a couple of questions here for you. Has there been a decision on commencement? Will it be virtual or in-person?
Yes, there's been a decision on commencement, although we haven't yet had the opportunity to communicate that. So the short story that I can share today that we will share with students when they return from the break is it's a hybrid. So we're doing what's called a grad walk, which means that we will set up the great hall for commencement without an audience. And each student will be invited to have their own appointment to cross the stage and have their moment with a couple of guests, and that will be videotaped. And then someone who has much more technological expertise than I do will figure out how to thread all of those together with the beginning and an end speeches, et cetera. And will really turn it into, I think, a much more powerful and personal-feeling commencement virtually than we were able to do this past year. So it's not going to feel like being in the dunk altogether, which is just the absolute best. But I think it's the second best. So that is the plan, and stay tuned for more information. And thanks to all the people who've been in the backdrop, Geraldine, Michael, the whole marketing team, planning that over the past few weeks.
And so while I have you, we have another question here for you. When more students come back to campus in the summer and particularly in the fall, will they be able to take part in activities and clubs on campus, specifically in-person theater performances, athletics?
Those are such great questions. And the, the best answer I can give right now is maybe. As President Hughes started us out, there's so much that is still dependent upon the progression of this pandemic. And our first priority as we look toward summer and fall is to determine the academic experience and the classroom experience. And we are working very closely on that right now. When we get to the other side of having an academic plan, we will then look at what are the opportunities that we might have to incorporate more of those activities that we know our students so desperately want and that we want to make happen as soon as we possibly can.
Great, thank you. Alix, why don't we turn it back to you for a minute? So yesterday, President Hughes announced a number of measures that were happening here at the college, including that the laid-off ESPA employees would be brought back. What can you tell us about the other employees that were laid off? Will they be brought back as well?
Sure. I think, you know, we have this positive change financial position, and it's allowing us to revisit a number of measures that we, you know, we had to take when our finances were so precarious. So really want to thank Civil Bailey and her team for the work that they've done with the ESPA union leadership to make this possible. So at the end of their assignments, we believe that's when those folks will be coming back. We, the other good news is that we've been also have worked with the Faculty Association and the PSA union leadership and will be providing the FY21 salary increases. That was also included in President Hughes's letter. And I want to thank the leadership of those unions as well for their, for their advocacy and their willingness to have an ongoing conversation about the college finances. The same, we, we offered the same to the Part-Timefaculty Union and the Drivers Ed Union. There were MOAs in place to defer their salaries, and it is at their choice. We are going to continue with those MOAs in place rather than do the FY21 salary increases. In terms of other laid-off employees, the handful of PSA employees, I believe there are six, are on a recall list. And as positions open up and based on qualifications, those will actually be made available to those six. As for the council employees, so the non-unionized employees, we are not intending on bringing back those positions and are, you know, setting some priorities for some positions that we've left vacant for a long time, such as deans, a CIO, et cetera.
Thank you. And on, why don't we stick to that front? Kristen, I have a question here for you. Since the announcement of the layoffs, there have been upgrades to certain salaries in various departments. How, what can you tell us about those? And was there a freeze due to the budget concerns or not?
So yes, thank you, Amy, for the opportunity to speak about the salary increases that some of our employees received. So because of all the actions that we had to take in the middle of the pandemic, the hiring freeze, yes, the layoffs, the unfilled vacancies, we had to put systems in place to be able to continue our business with the folks that we had. So generally, pay increases come in a couple of different ways. One of them is through the desk audit process. Another is when employees receive temporary increases when they are asked to take on significant new responsibility. And the other is by reclassification. If, if an employee's job is significantly expanded, their level of responsibility increases. So over the year, in the majority of the cases, the increases that were provided to our employees were through the desk audit process, through their, through their particular CBA. So for our non-union employees, most of them are for temporary additional assignments to make sure that we can ensure the continuity of the, the business of the college. So for an example, an employee who, in addition to their regular responsibilities, assumed the duties of another employee who, another non-union employee who unexpectedly vacated their position. So as those employees who are given specific duties related to an expanded level of responsibility return to their original levels of responsibility, the salaries will revert as well. So what I would want you all to know, as I look at the, as the, look at the salary increases as a whole, the vast majority of them were given to our unionized employees through their desk audit process.
through their desk audit process. When I look at the increases to non-union employees in particular, I want to assure everyone that none of the officers at the college received any increases during that time. In fact, they took salary reductions. So, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it, appreciate the question, and thank you.
And I have one additional question for you. So, if enrollment continues to decrease, will the college have to do layoffs again?
Sure, thank you. So, I think it's important that we all just take one step back and remember that revenue and expense are about inputs and outputs. So, we are a state, we're a state institution, which means we can't run at a deficit, we can't spend more than we bring in. So, we have talked a lot about tuition and fees and enrollment being the driver for our inputs. So, as we face enrollment pressure, we need to be prepared to remain flexible with our finances. Now, we're going to, we have seen the edge of the cliff. My team and I work hard every day, along with everyone else on this call, everyone else in our audience, to try and make sure that we are being good stewards of our money so that we never get back to that place again. Having said that, it would be irresponsible for me to say that we may not have to consider something like that in the future. I think it's important for everyone to hear me say, I am optimistic about where we are right now and still remain, want the college to remain nimble and able to respond to something that obviously we can't control. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think that pretty much covers the questions that we received. I believe there are a few that I will be able to answer outside of this call, so thank you. I know we are getting very close to 12:30, so why don't we turn it back over to President Hughes for final remarks? President Hughes?
Thanks so much, Amy, and thanks to everyone who submitted questions. I'll just close by reaffirming my unus to get us all back together on our campuses as soon as it is safe to do so, and also to share a very brief story about one of our students. I meet with, I talk to lots of different students all the time, including some last night, but I meet with one particular group of students regularly. And one of those students is a first-year promise student, and I have been on that journey with him as he has navigated being a first-time-ever college student and trying to figure out how to do it in his bedroom and then keep his very significant hours at Stop &amp; Shop. And when I talked to him last week, we had a visitor, we had Ryan Mitchner, who I'm sure many of you know, and Ryan asked the group the question, you know, "How's it going?" And it was so gratifying to me to listen to this young man answer Ryan's question when I reflect on where he was in September, when I reflect on even where he was in November and the hill he's trying to climb. And the crux of his message, he got a smile this big and just said, "I had no idea there would be this many people at the college who care so much about how I do here." And he was specifically talking about his faculty and his advisors and all the folks, many of whom I hope were on this call today. And he just said, "I don't think I'd be here still without them, and I had no idea this is what I would find when I came to CCRI." So, I want to close by thanking all of you. I know you're all doing that every single day and can't wait to see you all when we're all back together safely on campus. So, happy Fridays. Look to us to come back to you later this spring with an update and another town hall. So, thanks so much.